To the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones. Documents are available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Karski. And Craig Dewey is here this morning and can help you if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $4,038,332.49.
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion and second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There's a number of reports that I would come in for review. Data from the Mobile Crisis Team, annual stats through July, Minnehaha County Highway Construction Project update for August 2019, Sulan Library Board of Trustees Agenda for July 2019, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office Report for August 2019, and the Public Defender Advisory Board Meeting Minutes for March 2019. Takes us to item five, Personnel Actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a special personnel action to approve the conversion of Michelle Boyd from variable hour to full-time Sheriff's Office Programs and Services Manager. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm asking for your approval of this conversion for Michelle Boyd to go from variable hour to full-time. The reason it's showing up as a special commission action request is because the recommended salary is above the hiring range for full-time employees. What this comes down to is this would not be a special commission action request if there hadn't been a break in service from full-time. So the salary is very equitable with other people and for the position.
Thank you. Any questions?
Would move for approval.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to next item, which is to consider a motion to approve an update to the county's IT policy and the county's Policy and Procedures Manual to include the cybersecurity incident handling and response plan. Carrie Dever.
This was an item that was brought forward by Monty Wadambak as they were preparing for an upcoming audit. So I'm going to pass this one over to him.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, Monty Wadambak, Minnehaha County IT Director. We have recently created a incident response plan just as industry best practice and also to comply with criminal justice audit that we have coming up. And a quick summary of that policy basically is if you're a county employee and you lose your mobile device, you should contact the IT department so we can take appropriate actions. If at any point in time you feel that your computer has been infected or compromised in any sort of fashion, you should unplug the network cable immediately and contact IT. If you have a wireless device, you should power the device down and then contact IT. And then work with IT to basically fill out an incident response document to identify the source of the issue, the computers that were involved, so we can kind of evaluate how that happened to prevent those kinds of incidents from happening in the future. So anyways, that will be... What we're proposing is adding that to our county Policies and Procedures Manual as well as a snippet into the Employee Handbook. And then also a portion of that added to the IT Appropriate Use Policy.
Questions for Monty?
What if you can't remember your password?
As long as you're the only...
I'm just teasing.
As long as nobody else knows it, we can handle that.
That might be better than putting it on a post-it note on all of your...
Yep. Rather you forget it than advertise it.
Well, I just want to thank you for the work on this. This is something actually that I've been helping in my other job a lot of clients work through. And it is certainly best practices. And you know, it's fun to joke around about it a little bit, but these are very important issues for every entity anymore trying to make sure that we always don't let our guard down because there's a lot of people who are trying to take advantage of open sources to data and this kind of information. So I really appreciate your leadership on this and that the policies are both very well drafted, so.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Next item, item six, Appetements. There are none. Item seven, Notices and Requests. There are none. Item eight, Planning and Zoning Notices. There are none. Item nine, Petition for Compromise of Lean. There are none. So that takes us to public comment. If there's anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that's not on our agenda, it's your opportunity. All right, seeing none. Take us to regular business. First item is to consider a resolution of necessity to condemn private real property to complete a highway department project. DJ Boothie. Usually DJ just appears right on cue.
DJ usually does, and he's not here at this particular moment.
Okay. We could skip that one. Item and come back? To be able to visit about that. So we'll move on to item 11 and we'll come back to item 10 when DJ is available. So item 11 is to authorize the chairperson to sign the 2020 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Subrecipient Agreement. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, the Sheriff's Office. Filling in for Jason Gierman, the Director of our Emergency Management Division that has been preparing the subrecipient agreement between the State of South Dakota and Minnehaha County. What was formerly known as the State and Local Agreement or the SLA. The state likes to change acronyms and the feds. So it's now the Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. And what this is, is this is a grant that is passed through the state down to Minnehaha County for the two positions that we currently have in the Emergency Management Division for Jason Gierman and Doug Blumker. It provides reimbursement of 50% of salary and benefits for a certain percentage of time that they spend doing qualifying emergency management duties. Those duties are spelled out in a work plan, a very lengthy work plan, itemizing meetings, different procedures, planning, mitigation response that is necessary to prepare Minnehaha County in the event of a emergency response. This is an annual thing that we have signed in these years past to continue to participate in exchange for our reporting of the duties of the two people that are being reimbursed out of this position. So at this time, I'd request authorization for the commission to sign the 2020 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to authorize you to sign the 2020 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Subrecipient Agreement.
Second.
Are there any comments? I'd just like to make one comment. I did have an opportunity to meet with Jason and Joe and a couple of others just to kind of go through this agreement. And for those who wonder what emergency managers do all year long when you know, we thankfully don't have tornadoes every day or any other flooding every day, although this spring it did seem like we had flooding every day. But the exhibit seat of this is a work plan that is very detailed and a lot of oversight to make sure that we are prepared and that we are doing the things that need to be done in order to receive this money. So I just really appreciate the work that Joe and Jason do to make sure that we are ready in the event of a major disaster. Commissioner Barth.
I just want to thank Captain Bosman for helping me with the situation where he kindly dispatched a sheriff's deputy to check on something that was concerning to me and over the weekend. Thank you so very much, Captain.
Got a problem?
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the next item, we'll go back to item 10. I saw DJ is here now. So item 10 is to consider a resolution of necessity to condemn private real property to complete a highway department project. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Apologize for that. I was on the phone in the hallway there. As we've talked about last couple of meetings, we're working on a project, planning a project for construction next year, the County Highway 146 reconstruction. And as part of that project, a lot of the right-of-way out there is 66 feet wide or 80 feet wide. And so we're having to acquire H-lot parcels for additional right-of-way. Most of these parcels are between 10 feet wide or 17 feet wide and run the length of the parcel. When we started this project, we needed right-of-way documents and easements from 40 different property owners. And that included 62 unique parcels. We've successfully negotiated the majority of those. At this time, we have 18 remaining parcels owned by eight separate landowners. And we have not been able to successfully negotiate those. And it sounds like we're going to be able to get some of those. But to get the process started, we're asking for these 18 parcels that we passed this resolution of necessity. And that states that we need this land to complete the project for next year. I can stand by for any questions.
The questions for DJ? Commissioner Benega.
DJ, would you remind me when the Highway 146 project is really going to start construction and when you're anticipating that gets finished?
It's slated for 2020 construction. So we're hoping that it probably will start in March or April of next year. And it's seven miles long. And so we're probably going to end up having a two-year construction period. We would like to get the majority of that done in one year. But we might look at different phasing options for just ease of construction and phasing for the landowners.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Well, my question would be, there was a dairy operation with seven driveways. And have we come to an amicable agreement with that individual, that family?
We have been negotiating with that dairy. I'm not sure if one particular parcel has seven access points. I don't think that that's the case. They own actually several different parcels along that stretch of road. And we've negotiated, I think, in good faith and come to terms on a number of them. But I don't know that each individual parcel has come to an agreement as far as the whole operation goes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I don't think any of us take this kind of action lightly because it is, you know, kind of going into people's personal lives a little bit. But it needs to be done for the good of the entire county. And so I'll make a motion to authorize the resolution of necessity to condemn private real property.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? Commissioner Benega.
The only reason I asked a question, DJ, and I already knew the answer. But the real issue was, is I think people need to understand that this county road has got significant travel. And this is a huge safety issue for the whole county. And it's going to continue to grow as Brandon grows and Sioux Falls grows. So this needs to get done.
Appreciate the comments.
All right, motion and a second. Any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us down to item 12. To consider a motion to approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license for an event on September 14th, 2019 at the Isaac Walton League. Olivia.
Thank you. The Isaac Walton League is having another wedding event. This time it's for Dewey Montgomery and his bride. They would like to supply alcohol during their wedding. And in order to do that, they need a consume and blend license. So this would allow them to supply it for their guests, but they could not sell it.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Barth.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second.
Moving for approval. Olivia, we had another request for authorization at the Isaac Walton League. This is a separate one. It's not the same.
Correct.
Good times at the Isaac Walton League.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item 13. Consider a letter of support for the Ellison Eastern Application for Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you today is a request from Ellison Eastern for a letter of support for the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements application to the Federal Department of Transportation. Joining us today is Dan Kipley from Ellison Eastern. I am not the expert on railroads. He is. And is going to take you through what the letter of support is for and answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Carol. In front of you is some notes as far as some bullet points and as far as outlining what the Chrissy Grant and what we're doing. The Chrissy Grant is part of the FAST Act of 2015 that President Obama signed, authorizing rebuilding the infrastructure in the U.S. This round of grant funding consists of roughly $244 million. And 25% of that, or $61 million, is set aside for rural areas. The area that the Ellison Eastern is running is in a rural area. So we're got our fingers crossed that our grant will be successful, but we're also realistic. There's approximately 1,000 applications that go in for these grants. And of those, only 20 roughly get granted. So we've got a 2% chance. So what I am warning you on is that there's three different types of grants that are out there for rail infrastructure. And so you're going to see a lot of me over the next five years until we are successful in gaining some grants. But in the meantime, we're going to do it as the little engine that can, chug, chug, chug along. And we're going to continue to try to improve our line. But in order to do the Brandon to Valley stretch, Valley Springs stretch, it's going to take a huge capital infusion. And that alone is a stretch that needs to be real. But rehabilitated is about 1.3 million a mile. And there's roughly five, six miles there. We run from mile marker 42.5 to 49. So that's a big chunk of that. The other thing you need to know as far as on the Ellison Eastern is this is a matching grant. And so the Ellison Eastern will be putting up 51% of the dollars requested. So if we're looking at for round numbers, we are still retaining all of our engineering and bid numbers. But for round numbers, to make it lots of zeros, $50 million of a grant, that means that we're going to be coming up with over $25 million of infrastructure improvements from the Ellison Eastern and our parent companies. So it's a huge undertaking. But it's necessary as far as to be able to get the rail running from Sioux Falls to Worthington and be able to connect two Class 1 railroads. We have access to the BNSF here in Sioux Falls. And we have access to the UP in Worthington. But if all of our shippers on that line would have access to both Class Ones, we believe that naturally rates will drop. And that will be good for all the ag people as well as everyone else that uses lumber manufacturers here in the county and all the construction folks. Everyone will benefit from that. So this is an economic development issue that we're dealing with. So I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Dan? Commissioner Barth.
Senator Thune is on the Transportation Committee. Are we not going to write him a letter too representing Minnehaha County? Clearly, this is a great idea for our county going forward.
Yes, we would appreciate any support from the county to, directly to Senator Thune. We are working with his office as well as Senator Round's office and Congressman Johnson's office to receive support from all those folks and as well as from the governor's office. And but if you have other ways of helping us gain that support, that would be much appreciated too, to let him know that Minnehaha County supports it fully. So that would be much appreciated.
Dan, I'm curious if you've had any feedback from residents, particularly out in Brandon Valley Springs, who will now have trains going by their houses?
There's been some feedback. Again, I don't follow the social media that others do, but there has been feedback. But the biggest thing that we're concerned about is we want to provide a very safe and reliable and efficient rail line. And the line has been there for over 120 years. It's been unfortunate that that section hasn't been used for the past 40 some years. But now that with the industries changing, with the trucking industry having difficult finding drivers, the trucking rates have gone up drastically. And rail is becoming back in favor of an efficient way of shipping. And so we plan and we still continue our line and we are very safe. And the residents can know that Ellison Eastern takes the number one virtue that we live by every day is safety. So they will know that when we operate that line, it will be safe and reliable.
Have you reached out to the leadership of those two communities?
Yes, we have a meeting with Valley Springs this evening. And we haven't got a commitment from Brandon yet as soon as we get to meet with them. But yeah, we've reached out.
Okay.
We hope to be doing the same thing with them very shortly. Our application is due around the first of October. So that's why we're trying to gather all these letters of support that go into an appendix in our application.
Commissioner Karski.
Who have you met with already, Dan?
Nobles County has met and approved and passed a resolution and ready. I have their letter back. We have met with... Last night was Rushmore, Minnesota. Tonight it's Valley Springs. Rock County, which is Laverne. They're passing their resolution this morning as we speak. Clark Meyer is there. So we have the counties. I will be attending the State Rail Board again this next week. I've been attending several meetings. They are well aware of what we're doing. And we will be gaining their support next week and filtering the letter to Governor Noem to sign as well, going through the channels there. So we believe that we've touched as many bases and that the Sioux Falls Development Economic... Sioux Falls Development Foundation has forwarded the letter to us. We have that. The South Dakota Soybean Growers Association has given us a letter of support. I haven't tracked down the corn growers, but I anticipate that the corn growers will authorize a letter of support as well. So we're trying to... There's a shipper, an ethanol plant in Worthington or in Laverne is issuing a letter of support. And another liquid feed company in Laverne is also authorized in a letter because they use our line right now. But they want to really gain access to both lines because they know they'll become more competitive.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the signature of the chair for this grant.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Other comments? I'll just say that I am going to support this today. But I mean, you know, it's just like anything else that we deal with. I mean, I think this is an important economic development issue for our community and for a lot of folks here. But I recognize that there are folks that will, you know, feel adversely impacted by having trains run that haven't run, you know, in 40 years when they build houses. And so I'd really trust that you will work hard with those affected folks to design this, as you said, to be as safe and as least intrusive as possible for the folks who will be directly affected by it.
Your point well taken. We've already met with a half dozen homeowners that are closely, that have newer homes in the Brandon area. And we've had meetings with those folks already.
Yeah.
But we'll continue to meet and discuss and listen.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 14, which is a briefing on the fiscal year 20 budget to be adopted September 24th, 2019. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you, second to the last time, is the 2020 budget. You've been working diligently on that for several months. The next time you meet will be September 24th. And at that meeting, you will need to pass the 2020 budget. You do not meet next week because of the state association meeting. Last week you had a budget hearing and we had some additional direction. We had some additional numbers to go through and put in there. And therefore, there is an updated means of finance. And we are anticipating that this is the budget that you'll adopt on September 24th. The total 2020 budget is $92,67,110. In that, I think the two numbers that people pay most attention to is $1.75 million is from the opt-out that you approved in June that originally was starting off at 1.9. You've been able to drop that. And I will anecdotally just say, I thought it was going to be higher to begin with when we started this process. So the fact you've been able to drop that is really good. The other number that you pay a lot of attention to is the general fund opt-out. And that is at $4.2 million, $4.2 million, which is a reasonable number for the scope of this budget. So Kim Adamson, Finance Officer for the county, is present also. So last chance to give us any thoughts, any direction before you see it. Authorize it and sign it next week.
Comments for Carol? Thoughts? So my comment is that I would like to basically retract some comments that I made last week about the Jasper ambulance. After our meeting last week, we got further information that clarified that the Jasper ambulance did not actually submit an application for funding this year. There's at least one other ambulance that we haven't funded because we didn't receive a completed application for them. And so in order to be consistent, I would like to take the $1,000 out of the budget for Jasper ambulance since we did not in fact receive an application for them for funding for this year. Any comments about that?
Are you looking for a motion to do that or?
I don't know that we actually need a motion on this. It's just direction that we're providing because we actually vote on this next week. Or not next week, the week after, since we don't meet next week.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I have a different view of things there, but I appreciate your perspective.
Carol, since we didn't receive an application, do we have total application information from them on how much Jasper the community is supporting and how much fundraising?
No, we did not receive the application.
How many calls they make?
Off the top of my head, it's very limited. They carry just a very...
16 sections.
Yes, is the property that they carry up there. Very small numbers that they go through and have. But I know that the... I understand that the residents up there really like to have the Jasper ambulance. Would that be correct, Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, yes, that is correct. And it seems to me that Dr. Luther has given us numbers that show, you know, three or four calls a year in that area up there. That said, I also have a recollection that one year there were three calls to one address for a newborn that was having seizures. And I'm sure the parents there were very thankful.
And my comments have nothing to do with the quality of service provided by the Jasper ambulance or really anything other than I think it's important that we be consistent and that, you know, if we're requiring information from ambulances in order for funding, that we not provide funding to ambulances that don't provide us the information that we've requested. It's a very small dollar amount, so it's not based on the dollar amount either. It's really just the principle and the consistency that I want to make sure that we follow through on. Commissioner Benega.
Did they give us any information on why they didn't fill out an application, which only takes a few minutes?
No, we did not hear back from them.
I guess I did hear back, but it was in a longer message that I got. And Jim, the guy from up there, his comment, he was wondering how come we haven't had any ambulance meetings for a while? He's not been invited or whatever. And I don't know that we have had any for some time. It's been quite a while since Gerald, since we had one of those governance meetings, I believe. So I think he felt out of the loop or whatever. And if I might, I think we are still waiting to revise our ambulance ordinance as regards to two people and also the veto right of the incumbent operator. We need to make a couple of adjustments to our active ambulance ordinance.
Yes, and I visited too with Jason Gierman about trying to put a group together this year to really look at how we fund ambulances and to see whether the pot of money that we do allocate to ambulances could be allocated in a more appropriate or equitable manner. I think that's something that we've been, also had kind of on the list of things to do that now we need to push forward. So Commissioner Karski.
The fact that they didn't ask, maybe...
The fact that they didn't ask, and maybe there was a reason they didn't ask, they didn't know they had to ask, whatever. I know a lot of these rural ambulances do a lot of different things, just like the fire departments, rummage sales and that type of thing, to keep their operation running smoothly. But at the same time, yeah, a thousand dollars on ninety-two million is but a mere drop. But I, I would just be in favor of not including it at this point also, just for the reason that the ask wasn't there, and we haven't heard anything, and I think the awareness is there, but we haven't, other than maybe some communication directed through Commissioner Barth, we really haven't heard or seen anybody that's asking for it, so I, I'm, I'm okay with taking the thousand dollars out.
We'll get to decide that next week when we finalize the budget, right?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. So if you have some further direction after this meeting today that you could pass along to Carol and Kim, I think it'd be helpful if we have a final number that comes forward next, in two weeks, so. And Commissioner Hiber is not here today, so we can visit with her as well.
Correct. Changing that number on that Tuesday would be a bit of a challenge, because they, we'd probably have to go into recess while you guys recreated new documents that are out there, so just.
Yeah.
As a heads up.
Okay. Well, I'll take the responsibility to pull the commissioners between now and then and make sure we have a final decision on that. Okay? All right, so that takes us to item fifteen, which is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Karski.
I have a couple of liaison reports. One, we had a Public Defender's Advisory Board meeting. Last one was in March. We had one just this morning. The Public Defender's Office, other than a recent loss of a paralegal, is fully staffed. They don't anticipate any issues filling that position. Budgetarily, they are well within their budget, including where the, in past, you know, we've seen issues with the professional services, witness fees, et cetera. They're doing a fantastic job with their budget, my perspective. So really no issues. We did have public input at the Public Defender's Advisory Board meeting this morning, so that was somewhat unique, but all, all went well. The other thing we've been working on is the Triage Project, and it's one of those projects that, as Aaron Surska said, it kinda keeps inching along, so I don't wanna keep bringing it up too often without really having very good updates for you. We've been meeting with Miles Schumacher, local attorney in town, who's been drafting our bylaws, and we are planning a meeting with the mayor and senior officials from Avera and Sanford to hammer out the final bylaws so that they can be filed with the state to, for the legal entity to be recognized by the state, so that we can work with funding through the Development Foundation, so money can be channeled through them. We can do our, our RFP for an executive director and the contract that we're gonna have to run the triage. Um, you know, a lot of it goes, revolves around the availability of the facility that we're looking at, which will probably be early next year before it can be remodeled, and then, and we're, it, it, it keeps getting moved back, but with very good justification, but it keeps moving forward at the same time. It's been two, two steps forward and one step back maybe, but it, it is still being very actively. Trust me, I'm in meetings continuously with it, meeting with different organizations on funding and legal processes, et cetera, and making this work, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And the other thing, I don't know if this is new business more than a liaison report. Yesterday morning, I attended the groundbreaking for the.
Thank you.
Veteran cemetery. It was a very wet morning. Now, there were two very small tents that the speaker was able basically to stand under. The crowd was phenomenal. We had hundreds of people there. It's gonna be a great thing for, just within a very small, I mean, West River, there's supposedly, I believe seventy thousand military vets, and within a very close proximity to Sioux Falls, the number is about forty thousand, forty-three thousand, I believe. So the number of people that'll be, you know, served by that cemetery, and, you know, just as the, the thank you to the vets and for their service, just giving them that location to know it's there for them and their families is a huge thing. It's gonna be a beautiful place, and we're gonna see more and more about it, but it was just the attendance, the turnout, and in start, in spite of some really bad weather, it was a great event, a great organization thing, so.
All right, great. Other liaison reports? Commissioner Barth.
Couple of them here. One is, we had a museum board meeting, and in the last nine months or so, they've had a hundred and sixty thousand dollars donated to their future use. Hundred and fifty thousand from an anonymous, and ten thousand from our former chairperson of the board, Mike, and I'm sorry, I didn't write his name down, but I, I know him, I just, it's here. Then I wanted to mention, it was an article in today's paper relating to the public advocate, where a individual in custody has been incarcerated, not incarcerated, has been in our jail for a while and is now in private mental status, as the people in Yankton refused to take him, saying they didn't have the room. You know, the idea that there are maybe twenty people that are waiting to get into Yankton, that they don't have room, it's the state's responsibility to keep that operation going down there. They've refused to get it nationally, not licensed, what's the word?
Accredited.
Accredited. They've refused to get it accredited. They get a new director every two years. They don't have the room for the people that we need to send there. And now we're sending our people to a private facility for mental health care, and according to the auditor, we get the bill. Why would we get the bill? Because the state refuses to provide the facility. I mean, certainly if, if we had to pay the bill down there, we shouldn't have to pay the cost of private care in, if it's greater than the, the public would be. There's, there, the state facility at Redfield, they dumped all those people back into the mainstream. The penitentiary, rather than build a bigger penitentiary, they passed a law letting everybody go sooner. And of course, when they're let go sooner, where do they go? They go to Minnehaha County. Then where do they go? They go to Minnehaha County Jail. The state has refused to do their job at the mental health, at the penitentiary, at the Redfield operation, and we, Minnehaha County, get to pay for it. Okay, that's that liaison, liaison thing. And then I want to say also that I went out after our nuisance out in, in rural Minnehaha County, where we declared a nuisance, I think, at least three weeks ago, and the, the party involved has never come in to visit with us about what their plan is to remediate, or what their plan is to dispute it. And at this point, I certainly think there's, should be no impediment to moving forward with abating that nuisance.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? I just would state that the Homeless Advisory Board met, again, as a complete board, which is, you know, there's not a lot of people left on that board, but we did meet, went back over the report that we've received from the Augustana Research Council, and have a plan to move forward and, and reconstitute that. We're looking at possibly combining with a board that the city has used for approving some of their housing loans and programs through HUD, and so we'll just continue to work on that, and we'll be reporting back as further progress is made. All right, so that's the end of liaison reports. Any new business? Any old business? Commissioner Barth.
I would just like to say tomorrow is the anniversary of the nine eleven attack, a moment which united this whole country together like we've not been ever since. And it's very sad that we can't all be pulling together in the same direction to accomplish the many things which our country is waiting to have done. And it was a terrible time. I happened to be in Fargo when the, when the planes hit, and for some meetings. I was scheduled to be up there for a few days. I drove all the way home and made sure I had ammunition.
Any other old business?
Just great to see Craig Dewey back. Welcome back, Craig.
Absolutely, yeah. Congratulations on your new baby and, and fatherhood.
Eric Said, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for coming this morning.
That's a good question about executive session.